That's for case number three. Um, and case number two.
Just give one minute.
Good. I'll be going, I'm not holding pants up.
Just don't know where you're at.
Hello. So you guys mowing this year?
Um, already started. We started in Randolph and coming south.
Did you get a fuel surcharge, you know?
Excuse me?
So you able to do a fuel surcharge for them?
No.
That was all.
That's all we need.
Charlie's here with them. Put the biomass plan in, then the EOR went down. So we can save money, but not as much. So it looks like we're in the middle of a three-year contract. About two years, just signed it to the same year. But then they hit us with a fuel surcharge.
Solid point.
But not bad.
State of the month sent letters to all contractors saying no.
Oh, no. Yeah. You see, the state, the utility commission is passing on all requested fuel, you know, electrical increases to consumers.
Yeah, double. Well, forty-seven percent. Not quite.
I agree with this one, though. It was listed as to what decent places.
I had three on all that. I mean, that's justify everything else that's gone off like ten points.
All it takes is just a few more. If every truck in this country, every driver shut down, and every company shut down, it would take about three days before somebody would recognize that we got a change.
Well, that's it. It's just, I mean, takes less than finding diesel. Then those gasoline companies, why it should be more expensive.
We're paying for the solar, so we're not mine there. So you kind of.
Yeah, it goes fast. Okay. Sorry, you want that?
Well, it's not like we want the fuel prices to keep up.
But we, I mean, we're going to be very, actually.
The case is going to be over. Because you can't.
Yeah, you can't prepare for that.
And anytime you're ready.
Potential, there it is.
Um.
I drive a Prius.
Yeah, I'm driving what Sam calls prison van way more than the truck now. Um, I'll call the meeting on the sixteenth onboard to order. Um, roll call to my left is Bert Spalding Jr.
Senior.
Senior, sorry. I get the juniors and seniors.
They're very young today, Bert.
You're being young.
Senior. I know it's important to get the, all right, Bert Spalding Senior. Um, I'm Ben Nelson. To my right is Tim Beard, and to my far right is Jeff Kessler. And administration.
Um, could we move this? I request that we could make a motion to move these to the end. Uh, and see the cases first, although this is relatively benign. The two requests for one special exception, case 1090, and one variance, case 1097, to get extensions for their multi-unit workforce housing complexes, one on John Stark Highway and one on Spring Street.
Both of them were put in writing that they'd like to request an extension of twelve months each due to continued either getting their ducks in a row, permitting, finalizing supply chain.
I'll make a motion that we grant the twelve-month extension in both cases.
Hold a second for discussion.
Twelve months? Are they, you're going to renotice the abutters?
I don't believe there is any need to renotice when you have asked for an extension prior to the expiration of the twenty-four-month period. If you let it expire, it has to be renoticed, and you, in essence, have to come in and rehear the case.
What abutters will remember one year from now?
What?
So without notification?
But these have already been approved, right?
This is approved. These are two approved cases.
Yes, they're not going to start construction until.
The law, the RSA has, if you haven't done any significant, or even some work, groundbreaking, that you have to show some good faith of construction, or your variance in special exception expire. The special exception is on the Spring Street one.
The key is, the key is already approved.
Yes, they're, oh, they're both already approved, absolutely.
And with, yeah, with construction the way it is, I don't mind, I don't, I mean, I'd love them to get going, but I don't mind them.
Well, one of them happens to actually be here tonight due to some revisions, and so I think there's, just working out, the case has delayed it a little bit.
And I know with the other one, they're trying to get their delays done first.
Right, and then there might be some monetary issues or delays, which hoping things may.
Well, I know it's aggravating, but hopefully they'll give the town time with the governor's plan, there's money for the town. Now, can we get that after? Seems how they've already been approved.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. I think especially, well, they would probably know even better than I do, because they're both work in this field much more extensively, but I would assume, especially under the circumstances of housing getting worse and construction costs getting more, that there could be applications to sinuses, housings.
Heads up to our slugboard members, that's money to the town.
You mean the workforce housing?
For the towns that approve workforce housing.
Yeah, was it twenty-four million, or was that?
I don't know, something, but it's direct grants to the town that approves them, so I don't know if it's a, if they're in the pipeline, I would ask. Okay. Minutes of the night.
Well, we haven't taken a vote on my motion yet.
Oh, so, yes. Any more discussion?
Did it get a second?
I didn't. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that all, Christina?
Yes.
And minutes of the night.
Thirty minutes, those.
Second.
One of us is going to have to hold on. Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I mean, I'll vote yes, too. I read them all, but it doesn't seem to, yeah. But we know better than to let them wait.
Yeah.
Okay. New business. Case 1130, David Mill, owner of, uh, that would be, I, somebody pronounce it for me.
Avon Row.
Avon Row, right. Development agent, requested variance in Article Four, Section 409, to prevent a multi-unit structure with less than, to acquire two parking spaces per dwelling. The property is identified as map 116 lot 76, and is located in Spring Street, Spring Street, in the heavy commercial R2 zoning district. And so I'll let the applicants present their case, and then.
I'm, I'll not sit on this case.
I think this one is attached. This was additional information, and I thought I had attached it to the back of the case, but I'm not, I'm sure.
So have the applicant present their case, and then we'll hear from abutters, and then everybody will have a second bite at the apple, and we'll close it to the board and go from there.
Now, before they proceed, since there's only three of us, we all have to be in agreement for it to pass. You know, the applicant always has the option to come back when there's a.
Jack Franks Avenue Development Group here tonight with me, civil engineer, Erin Darrow. And I'd like to just add, if I could, please, the portal for the governor's money is supposed to be coming open on June twentieth. I've been working with Commissioner Caswell and one of the executive counselors on some of the language for that. So what I'll do tomorrow is I'm going to put an email to Miss Donovan, and I'll put them in that email, so that she can inquire directly to the state on that, because that money is going to be coming available. So opportunities like Spring Street in North Main, where Debbie and I are working on for the senior housing, I think those will all be an opportunity for the town. So I'll put you in touch with them tomorrow, so that you can talk to them directly, or you can forward the information to the board.
Fantastic.
My only thing is where it's approved, but not started, is that, hopefully.
Yeah.
But the governor likes us, so hopefully that works.
Excuse me, Mr. Chip. He asked about agreements, because they're only three members.
Yes. Did you understand that?
Oh, you, is that it? That blue bit? Is that an easel?
Okay, and we can punt until next month if they want to come back.
Well, I think we're ready. We were here last month.
Okay, yeah, I know, I know, yeah.
So we're kind of in a little bit of a time constraint, and thank you for approving the extension. We have a scheduled closing date with the State Housing Finance Authority, scheduled for August fifteenth, that may get delayed until early September. So, and then we were getting really close to the date of our approval, so that was for the reason for the extension. So appreciate you for making that.
Do you need an easel, Mr. Franks?
Pardon?
Do you need an easel?
Um, well, I can hold it.
Okay, because I'm not.
Or unless you want to.
I don't know if I have one. I'm not sure if that one is one in the quarter.
I don't know.
It's not, is it?
No, it's a screen. How strong is that magnet on the board there?
It is. I think that's what we did last time.
I think this is what we did, right?
Yeah.
I think we should.
Oh, thanks. I'll find, I'll have my.
We have that, we have it in there. In the other room.
Yeah. Exactly. Right there. The. This is the only one that wasn't. And that's.
We're supposed to get new windows.
These are original.
That might stand out because.
Going through Department of Energy, and the last thing they said to us was, well, you know, except match on that.
Yeah, the windows cost fifty. Which is like paying for them full price now.
The windows cost fifty more than they did.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
She wanted a letter that sent.
You want to take four?
Uh, yeah, a little tape, but maybe some easel for the other one.
A letter that was meant for like some town in Wisconsin. There they go.
I know this.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah.
It's a hundred percent. Can you send this over? It's a hundred percent, yeah. Yeah. If I had to, it's like, we've already blew a bunch on the cost, I think it's cost.
That'll work. I'm pretty good like that.
That's right. Well, just on the bench.
Well, good evening. My name is Erin Darrow, I'm a right angle engineering, and I'm here this evening to represent Avon Row Development for a modification to the approved plan, and specifically what we're here tonight is for variance from Article Four, Section 409.7, to allow for a reduction in the parking allowance for this site property, two per unit, to 1.5 seven spaces per unit. We have submitted an application with the updated site plan detailing the criteria of how we meet requirements for our variance. This is the plan that has been approved, and it includes two detention ponds and parking on both sides of the building that extend all the way over to the north end of the site property. As everybody got ready for construction, some geotechnical engineering took place over the winter, and it came to our attention that there were some issues with the groundwater elevation that needed to be addressed. And in taking a look at that, we made some modifications to the site plan that, in my professional opinion, is a significant improvement over what had been proposed, because it works more with the natural flow of the water, and it takes better advantage of site characteristics that in the long term, I think, will provide more longevity and more aesthetic benefit, you know, in general. And it does require a reduction in parking. So, however, we believe it's going to have more parking than what's required. So I provided a pretty detailed memorandum, and since that is technically a public marker, I'm assuming we don't need to read that for today on tonight. But we can go through.
Just summarize it, if you would. If you can just.
Yes. Yes, I can do that. So, um, and.
Do you want one?
Yes, something happened to my copy.
Sure. Here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, um, we can start here with item one. So basically, you know, I provided a summary of what we're looking to do, and we're going to go through as to why this meets the requirements of the variance and improves the project as a whole. So one, the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. So granting the variance would result in the construction of a parking lot that would exceed the anticipated demand for parking. Based on information from the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, generally speaking, a workforce housing unit, housing development like this requires 0.9 parking spaces per unit. And that's based on consistent parking and traffic counts for similar developments all across New Hampshire. I'm not sure if that database includes outside of New Hampshire, but it is something that's been reported over time.
Just, just to.
Just New Hampshire. But consistently, that, that has been the demand, because, you know, some.
Do we know when that was updated?
I think the last.
Those things have changed markedly.
I think it was 2018, I believe, is when the study was completed. I think they're probably in the process of updating that again, but that's, I think that's over a course of a very long time, twenty-plus years. So there's a lot of data there that supports the workforce housing developments across the state of New Hampshire.
And, you know, consistently, that is shown to be the general demand to the average. Now, some people will have a car, some people who will have no vehicles.
At Avonaki Springs in Waltham, New Hampshire, we have forty-three units, similar, you know, community a little bit smaller. I think there are forty-one cars there for forty-three units, so a little less than one car per, um, per unit there, but still in line for the state housing agency's expectations of parking demand. Unfortunately, there we have, um, eight, six parking spots now, and we have over forty of them are not used. So it's kind of a bother, because I was proud to put it more near there, but, you know, that's the way to figure, so.
So point nine has been, point nine spaces per unit has been established by, as the recommended parking generation for, from the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority. We're proposing 1.5 seven spaces per unit, which is less than the two spaces per unit that's required by the Newport zoning ordinance for apartment units. That two spaces per unit, again, is more than what is anticipated for the demand for this proposed workforce housing development. I think a very significant component to this is we're providing parking with an additional allowance beyond what is anticipated. We're able to condense the impervious surface in the pavement, and we're able to improve the drainage and stormwater management. From the plan that we currently have approved to where we are now, there's a reduction of over 6,300 square feet of impervious surface. And we are able to provide additional area for stormwater, we're able to increase capacity for stormwater runoff and retention, and provide enough benefit to any sort of water quality off-site discharge. So really, we're going to address the demand needed for the parking, see the demand that's needed for the parking. Yes, it doesn't comply with the zoning, and that's why we're here tonight, but for what is anticipated to be needed for demand, we are providing a factor of safety, and we're going to be able to reduce impervious surface. So it is frustrating when you see these large parking areas that are only half-full in many spaces, because that impervious surface is area that increases, you know, deep, it increases runoff, it decreases green space, so, you know, it's finding that optimal balance, you need to have enough, we don't want to have any sort of offsite, negative offsite adverse impact, but at the same time, you know, have a, have a balance between all this demand. So the spirit of the ordinance would be preserved because the proposed layout. because the proposed layout provides the parking that's required. It minimizes impervious surface. And there will be adequate off-street parking. So the likelihood of there being offsite spillover is very minimal. I can't say that a hundred percent it would never happen because nobody knows a hundred percent about what might happen in the future. But the likelihood is very, very low. Granting the variance would do substantial justice. The proposed parking configuration would again allow for the effective use of the property, improve stormwater management, reduce impervious coverage, and provide adequate parking on site. And that's really the intent of this ordinance. And we're going to be providing that. And by granting the variance, substantial justice would be achieved. And I'm not going per betam, but basically provides, yes, I'm right. Item four, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished. Christina provided a copy of, I believe, the letter, the May 21st, 2022 letter from DGW regarding the anticipated impacts to the abutting property value. And as noted, there are no anticipated impacts to the value of the abutting properties. And I think it's important that it be considered that it's only for this reduction in the parking. It has nothing to do with the use or anything else with the site. Is would this reduction of parking allowance impact the value of the properties? Similar with all the other criteria. And now we're on to item five. So literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. So item one, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. So strict enforcement of the permitted use and literal compliance with the parking requirements would result in an unnecessary hardship to the applicant because it would make it very difficult for us to actually complete construction of this facility. The proposed number of parking spaces in the updated site configuration will improve the use of the site property, decrease impervious surface, improve stormwater management, result in a better project. The proposed number of parking spaces exceeds the demand anticipated on detailed parking study data. There'll be more than enough parking and an improved site layout. The proposed use is a reasonable one because it provides more than adequate parking and decreases impervious surfaces in comparison with the two spaces per apartment as required by Article Four, Section 409.7. The proposed use with the parking is definitely the best option given the special conditions of the site property. Natural features of this property distinguish it somewhat from other properties as it limits the developable area and fragments the site to some degree. Excuse me. Um, let me grab a drink. Thank you.
How many, how many units?
The decrease in the number of parking spaces allows for improved site grading, layout, and stormwater management. So the three things I kept saying over and over again were basically adequate parking, improved stormwater management, decreased impervious surface. And those three things. Oh, I'm sorry.
Makes of one bedroom.
I have that allergies.
One bedroom, one bedroom and two bedroom apartment.
Yeah, I'll be okay. So that's really what we have to address these five criteria. And I'm going to step out just for a moment. I'll be back in a second.
Oh, they blew off. That's all right. You know who everyone is.
But, um. Questions are here from the butters? What makes?
Can you detail more why you need to eliminate 18 or 20 parking spots? I am concerned about losing those parking spots. I mean, it may not be necessary all the time, but, uh, it's, you know, what's, what, what was the trade-off that required you to eliminate the parking spots?
It was the groundwater table. It was much higher anticipated where this, Eric could probably speak to it better than I, but this detention pond that we had, it was in here. So the water, the water runs this way. So when we were looking at the major detention pond that was supposed to have gone in here, realized that the elevation there wouldn't support that. And you can't find that out prior to doing test bits and digging. So this whole area up here really won't support that. So in doing so, we eliminated just this area here for parking. Because I can tell you from experience that nobody's ever been there. It's just going to be a parking lot with no cars because we really aren't going to use that at all. So we were able to take these two areas and we were able to find them because the water flows this way. And you can see that the elevation here is at 805. Down here is 790. That's 15 feet. So there's a huge difference. Go ahead. You can explain. I was talking about the, you asked the question about the elimination of the. And the groundwater on the northern end where that was going to go was going to be impacted.
Yes.
Yeah. So I can let Eric speak now.
So pretty much the retention pond needed to be moved.
Yes.
That side parking lot was the only spot to move it to.
It was the best, and it's the best spot to move it to. It's a natural, it kind of naturally.
Oh, okay.
Yes, even, even in this previous version, yes, it's down in the lower part in the back, but you're still kind of fighting gravity a bit. And that's why we have, we end up having two detention pond areas. And instead we have one, and it's, it's where the water naturally wants to go on the site property. This, this is higher still, you know, this is, this is a little bit lower than right here. But it's where the water naturally kind of goes. So we, it, it works better with the site. We can reduce the number of parking spaces. And we really have to because where the detention pond was designed, the groundwater is too high to make it work. So.
One of my concerns is, you know, between the single and the two-bedroom units, you have, I think it was like 60 bedrooms in the facility. If I remember.
Thirty-six, forty-six, fifty-six, sixty, correct?
Yeah.
And we have, I think, 65 parking.
Right. Which means that everyone in a bedroom has a vehicle. You've only got like five extra parking spots.
Yeah, we have, at Abenaki Springs, we have a total of 14 two-bedrooms. So similar, here we're going to have 18, so this is going to be four more. And again, we have 40 more, 40 more vehicles there that are registered that are unregistered basis for 43 units. So even, even here, where here, we will have four more two-bedrooms. We're, we're still, I mean, you know, if you added four more to that, we're 40, 45. We're still 20, 20 additional parking spots there that likely won't be used. And, you know, people not, not home at the same time. You know, it's just, it's going to be, there's going to be empty space.
Right. But also Spring Street is not a street where you want to be parking on the street if you do have open road.
Yeah. No, we would certainly add signs if, you know, if we needed to on the main highway of parking. There will be a guardrail system there.
Right.
I think we are planning on putting it here anyway. So I think that would eliminate any parking there. But the likelihood of, I mean, likelihood of, I mean, I guess, quite honestly, if there was an issue and we didn't need additional parking, one area might, might be here in the future. We could probably have seven more if we needed to, lead us to 72. But I, I, quite honestly, overbuilding has been an issue with development over the past. And this is another situation where it flows better. We have, the big thing is we get more green space. We really have another 6500 square feet of green space and better drainage. So it's, it's less, you know, less, less impervious.
Less pervious, less impervious.
Less impervious. So it's a, it's a better, it's, it's better. Again, we couldn't, we didn't know that until after, you know, the test bits and the the borians and the drones were.
So tell me again how many ones and how many two-bedroom?
We have 18 two-bedrooms and 24 one-bedrooms. And I think there are handful of those. Yeah, 18, 18 and 24, correct.
Any other questions on first thoughts? I guess, would anyone else like to speak for the project? Or any butters, I guess? Go ahead, Miss Spelling.
I want to get the numbers straight to make sure we're right. What are the total number of apartments?
Forty-two.
Okay. And to break down, how many for two as opposed to one?
There are 18 two-bedrooms and 24 one-bedrooms.
And originally, how many spaces did you put forward in your plan?
The town requires two for every unit, so that would be 84.
And how many are you asking for now?
Sixty-five.
Excuse me?
Sixty-five.
Fifty-five.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five. We've got more presentations on. I would like to hear the rest of the presentation. You were not done. Am I correct?
I think that, I mean, I know I left somewhat abruptly, but that essentially concluded the presentation.
Let's hear from you. Go ahead. More questions?
Yes, and comments.
Yeah, I was going to say, let's get questions and we'll hear from the butters and then we can comment afterwards maybe. Go ahead.
No, go ahead. Do it by the book.
Yeah. So question, any more questions?
No, I'm all set on that part.
I mean, I'm sure more, anything, anyone else like to speak? Okay. Surprised. Okay. Questions or comments?
Weekends, visitors, if in fact there's not sufficient parking. Now, during the week, yes, I can see people working. The problem comes at night, but it is for the residences. And there's a high probability that that is enough. But then on the weekends, visitors come, et cetera. If in fact there's not enough parking, who handles it and how does it get handled? That's not an answer, a question for them to answer. It's a question for the board to answer how it's handled. Because Spring Street does not allow for that parking. And that being the case, maybe there's a compromise between the two and et cetera that is not the 19 difference that we're looking at now. But I guess I would say, when you purchase a lot and you design on it, you've got to figure into that, how are you going to do the whole project? And yes, you can find out that you have impervious material that, areas that aren't there that you thought. But that is a problem that you, the builder, handle. I do not see that there is a variance requirement here that is, that is created by the lot decision. And that, outside of that, I think the, the project is worthy. But to cut back on the parking spaces. And the next question I would ask is, are these, what is, what are the width of the parking spaces that you originally proposed and now?
They're identical. They're the same.
And what's, what is that dimension?
The dimension, I'd have to scale it, but I think you have 10 feet. Is that what it is here?
Excuse me?
Is it 10 feet here or 9?
I believe that, I believe that Tom designed them to be consistent with the Newport requirements, which is probably 10 by 20 and might be 9 by 18. I did not do this.
I don't believe we have. That is typically a building.
Um. I think we do.
They tend to be more for pre-assist and pickup trucks lately, I'm finding.
You think we have the size requirements in our variances?
Maybe.
Yes.
Not for variance.
Not for, I mean, in our.
Parking, parking period.
Code, in our zoning code.
I'll ask while you're digging for that, I'll ask another question. I, I work for my old fart hat on and I plowed snow for a number of years. And for an apartment building, you used to be able to go in, clean out the entrances early in the morning, let people get out and go to work. And then the park would be pretty much empty and plowed out. Well, not as many people go to work right off in the morning for, depending on various reasons. And they used to have one car, sometimes they've had two. Anecdotally, I'm seeing two cars and they're working on one. Or they've got a utility trailer or something that stays. So I'm, again, anecdotally, I'm just seeing more, more parking spaces in apartment buildings than I used to 10 years ago.
Well, in affordable housing, you are allowed to have no unregistered vehicles. You're not allowed to have utility trailers. You're not allowed to have campers or anything along those lines. They have, they have your vehicles and that's it. And that's written into the lease. And those are, those are, those are lease violations and that's, that's, that's not permissible. So again, you know, with 42 units, if there were 42 cars, we've got 65. That's 23, 23.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is the 10.
So then where's the snow going to go?
It's all on what we've done. We have a snow area here that we're going to be plowing. This whole area up and through here will be snow areas to be removed. And if there is a need or an issue for us to have to truck it off, then we'll contract that and have a truck out.
All right. So no, no parking spaces. Because some lots, parking spaces get eaten up with snow.
No, no, no. That, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be allowed. We have to have fire lanes cleaned, you know, by, by state. All that stuff has to be, yeah, it's, it's pretty.
I mean, everybody's seen parking lots with a snow plow on six spaces.
No, the state of New Hampshire has a pretty stringent list of requirements in how things are maintained. So we have a pretty wide area here that will handle a lot of that snow. Areas up in here that will handle less snow. But again, if there were a need for us to have to truck it off, it would just simply be trucked off. That would be pretty much over. But I mean, realistically, what, what we're talking about really is this area right here. Everything else is identical. Nothing else has changed. Everything else is the same. We just want this pond and this pond to here. We have a clean path plowing here, area up in here, there'll be additional snow plowing. And realistically, at 42 spaces, we have 23, 23.
It is, it's 10 by 20. Zoning code, it's 409, I think, 0.3.
We're going to be using, again, so, you know, we're asking for a 0.43 reduction?
Yeah.
It is, it's 40.
0.43. And the data for New Hampshire housing is very clear. It's very, very clear as far as what the requirements are for these departments.
Parking assigned per unit?
No, the folks do have to register their vehicles so we know exactly how many people have them. And that's one of the reasons why they, the data that they have is so precise that everybody has to, you know, have accurate numbers of what, you know, paths, certain, you know, everything. It's all very heavily regulated. I mean, we're in a situation where our water tables here, as Erin has spoken to, are high. We're going to be not able to put this project up without some changes made to this. So, you know, this is, this is kind of what we're facing. We're trying to, we're trying to come up with a solution to the groundwater issue that we're suffering from here and make this a viable project.
Have you been to a planning board on this?
Uh, no.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
On, not on the, the reduction in parking spaces, but on the plan, obviously in its entirety.
Right. Is that something the planning board would have to take another look at?
Well, you know, I've questioned that only because it, it's. Well, you know, I've questioned that only because it, it makes it, from a planning board perspective, typically it makes it more within what they, what they like to see. It's you that are really affected, the requirements. They like more green space. They like to make sure that there's less, less pavement typically. So, but I haven't, that's tossed back and forth in my brain just because usually when you ask for more parking, that's when I say, oh, I can't approve, that would, more, more pavement, more paving. Less, it's a little gray, but obviously they could easily go. I don't know what they would decide because it's just less pavement, which they would be like happy for.
Right. I'm thinking, say, a contingent where if they find they, do you have overflow parking on enough of a basis that it's a recurring event, that there's some option that they could put in to lose six or seven?
That would be you writing it in of granting the variance.
Let's, let me do this.
I believe.
Pardon me, pardon me, like I said, the old pardon me says two spots make sense. You guys have a finding data that says statewide, they don't use it, you don't use it in Walpole. But if it's prohibited on Spring Street and we make sure people aren't parking on Spring Street, then it's more a you problem. If you've got more cars and you've got parking lot boards, your tenants are gonna be parking in front of each other and that type of stuff.
And I can also add something and for the record too, that this whole area up in here is the area that I own, or actually the owners here tonight owns now, that we'll own as well, or I'll own as well once this happens. There's an opportunity, if there was an issue, that if we needed to put in, you know, six additional parking spots here, which I anticipate would never happen. Do you have another area up in here that could be leveled and there could be some additional parking if it was ever needed there? So, you know, it's not like we're stuck in that. If we found that there was additional parking that was needed, that we couldn't mitigate that problem at that point. But, you know, we have, we have opportunities to expand on that down the road if in fact. And Swansea, for example, we asked for a parking reduction and then they gave us a parking reduction. It was two and we went from two to like 1.4, I think a little bit less than this. And what we were able to do is show, you know, where we had a little bit of, you know, over parking, we needed it down the road. And that area is all green space and now it's gonna be better than the sheltering bed for, you know, the environment. So, you know, similar here, where we're gonna have more green space, more green space, it just flows better. And, you know, we've got that spot up here where we need to mechanic pour over here down the road. So, can you answer your question, yes?
Well, and where I was going, and less pavement is a good thing, but like, you know, maybe, maybe have that space on the end gravel for now and with seven more spaces or whatever. And then, then if you don't need it, bring it over. I mean, that's, I'm just throwing that out for the board.
And that's still no worries?
Yes.
I take exception to what Christina said. The planning board in a site plan has to weigh all of it. The snow removal, the green areas, all of that has to be weighed together. When in fact, we take this and do a variance to it, we make a stepping stone for less spaces in our environment. Yes, you get south of here, they don't have as much snow, but the parking for the people and people that come, visitors, should be adequate, not marginal. And if we reduce it to the point where it gets marginal, then we've got cars on Spring Street. That being said, I think that it is, it makes it uncomfortable to take 20 spaces, 19 spaces out from a project that is engineered on this site to be. We have not, you have not, seen any detailed report on the point nine. I would like to read that report. So that being said, from my, from my point of view, that it doesn't satisfy the requirements of a variance to reduce the parking areas by 19. And the parking spaces are required to be 10 foot by 20 foot. What is it that you actually have there without scaling?
Go ahead. Yeah, first, are they 10 by 20?
I haven't scaled them, so it's whatever. We, like I said, we didn't change anything that was previously approved. So whatever it was is exactly what it was, this whole area. So we have 6,500 more square feet of green space, 6,500 more square feet to put snow. So that, that's incorrect, number one. Number two, we did submit from the state of New Hampshire, a study that documents all of that and that is on the record. So point nine is the number. So that's not, that's inaccurate as well. So we're here.
I think all he said was he hadn't seen it.
Yeah, oh, sorry. Well, I thought he said we hadn't, we hadn't, we hadn't submitted, because it is submitted. We showed, we sent that out. Christina, was that bigger than that?
He did send that out. Is it in, in the main folder there?
I don't know. There's lots of stuff in the main folder that I haven't.
Yes, it's this one. I apologize. I have numerous copies of this. It's that. Hold on.
But what I was wondering, in that spot where he said would be for overflow, if we did stipulate that that be designated as overflow parking with another, you know, 10 spaces or something. I mean, I'm just throwing it out there for you guys. Because I don't, the way the driveway is gonna be set up and things, A, I don't see people parking on Spring Street and I think through the toe zone signs or something like that.
Yeah, we just don't want to get into a situation where it does become an issue because we have no authority to go back on it unless this stipulation is already in the, in the variance.
Well, I think it'll be up to the town for Spring Street, there's so many parks on the side of Spring Street, they can tell me. But, I mean, that's what I'm looking at. If we can stipulate some extra spots in that, that would be my idea towards a compromise. And whether it goes in, you know, I can let the planning board fight out whether they want to see it again. That's really not our priority, whether the planning board figures they want to see it again.
Jack, where's that spot that you said you could potentially put, like overflow parking?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just outside, outside. And this whole area up here is ours. So, yeah, so if we, if we wanted to add additional parking up in here, we could easily, gosh, we could easily add 100 spots.
What about, what about parallel parking along that entrance drive?
Might be difficult, only because of the plowing and we want to leave ample room for the fire departments and department site up on that. So we probably want to leave that shoot open. I suspect that the vast majority of people are gonna probably come together to park on our side, on the side of the building in a dozen rooms.
Thinking is, is there enough room here? Why is that? So you have no road parking alongside there, still have your options?
I think the way the confluence are running now is gonna be a little bit difficult. The easiest spot would be to ask, put a few more in here, or as the chairman suggested, just, if you just gravel that.
Well, yeah, I'm not saying pave it, just, you know.
Gravel it, because, you know, that would, that would be.
I think it would be a lot more easier if that was just a, I don't know, big, but just a gravel area that you'd have overflow parking, that 20 spots, that would give you more than, you know what I'm saying? Like, you spend a lot of money and pave it or anything just.
Or up here?
Yeah, just like there's small.
Well, no.
Right. Just putting, I mean, none of that's in the budget, you know, at this juncture.
Need training.
Yeah. But I mean, we got, we've got, you know, 65 parking spaces. I mean, if we, you know, were to leave this gravel, that's a great suggestion there. You know, we're talking six more spots. I mean, we're at 70. You know, we're, 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 double, you know, probably. Christina shows you that data. It's pretty compelling. And this is a state, from a state agency that's come out for, you know, over 20 years.
And, you know, I mean, the communities to the south of us have better transport, communities have better public transportation than we do. You know, so it's less need of a car to the south is my, but your Walpole data means more to me than the state average, probably.
Yeah. And where we are in Walpole and where we are here, the site was picked specifically for walk score. So the, the part of the funding mechanism is, where are you? We're within walking distance to McDonald's, to the health center. We're right there. And that's the reason why. We'd actually have, you know, conversations about, you know, whether or not we're gonna put a little virginity back there, or a walkway or a little.
Yeah, probably be ideal to be able to cut straight through.
Yeah. So, you know, with fuel prices the way they are and things going up and people driving, you know, less and owning cars, and Katie's fine to use her for God's sake. I'm looking for one. But, I mean, the walk score is really a big asset here. And that's why we picked that spot, because we need people to be able to walk.
No, I've been thumbing through this thing to see, to see the point nine somewhere, but.
Okay, yeah, feel free.
As we say, like, urban youths aren't even getting licenses now. Urban youths aren't even getting licenses now. Obviously, they don't need to drive, but.
There's this one, and then I've got two more coming.
Oh, yeah, but we're still digging for where the point nine is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Turn you to work. There we go. Page 43. That's on page 43, yep.
Please put it down some. Yeah, and, age restricted is point eight and general averages is point nine.
While we're in silence, other than scaling and off of there, I haven't actually heard the words, the parking spaces will be 8 by 20.
10 by 20.
10 by 20.
10 by 20 is what our zoning regulation requires.
Right.
And so that's what we are expecting.
I said that the parking spaces will.
10 by 20 is what we asked for, so. Those tenants with compact cars will be fine. Those with full-size pickups are gonna have a tough time anyway.
Alternate parking. Compact truck.
We could, we could, as a gang, put through certain, through the strategy process, we could ask to pay areas for electric vehicles if they need to or.
Oh, no, we're just, we're just, we have pickup trucks and we're complaining that the six spots seem to be getting smaller. At least that's where I'm coming from.
The pickups are just getting bigger.
If they're 10 by, and, yeah, I mean, that would have been to comply, if we do a motion and we can put it in this motion, the double, double. So I guess we haven't been terribly structured, but.
That's all right.
It works. But I mean, rather, I would rather err on the side of starting with gravel and turning the green space later than have green space turned in the apartment later would be my. And I know, I know, I think the power should be called gravel and impervious surface too, but.
No, I don't, I don't.
Well, gravel is more impervious.
Okay.
But, you know, it depends, like, for an alteration of terrain, they consider that impervious. So gravel, depending on the level of compaction and other things, it will, it will not be as pervious as, say, grass or, or.
Better than concrete.
It'll have probably more infiltration than a paved surface, but it depends on what it is at the top and.
Well, I mean, that's, that's where I was going, is just, you know, good enough for near overflow parking.
Well, you could easily, we can easily add that on that far end if you wanted to say, you know, six additional spaces to the south end of the building adjacent to, that will be left gravel and we'd be happy to do that.
So you think all that's gonna fit there is six?
Yeah, I think six.
That gets us to 71.
God, we're here. Because we have the same area here, this area over here, we could just add gravel. Yeah, so additional network.
Well, we have.
Yeah.
Well, maybe.
I think we can run it this way.
Okay.
We heated it.
Well, you guys. So, yeah, so this is 1.4, so that gets us to, I'm not gonna do math in public, but that gets us to well above one and a half.
Would be 70, 42, would be almost 1.7. Parking spaces, very.
Personally, I could live with that, but, I don't know. Respectable compromise. Let me refresh my memory. Are we voting on all, all five now or how are we gonna?
You would be going through them, making, someone making the motion on each and then voting. You'll be the only one writing it down. Unless you did, I know. I think you weren't here when they voted, the chairman was gonna make the notes. Although, moral also documents what's stated and we can also look at video. So if you get some of your wording wrong, I wouldn't worry.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to break this down, make a motion that, draining variance would not be contrary to public.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Did you officially go into deliberation?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'll take a motion on that.
Well, I won't make that motion.
You're going to deliberate?
Sure. Make that motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we're in deliberation, we actually deliberated ahead of time, but.
She can back beat the time.
If we're done deliberating, it would entertain motions.
Make a motion that granting the variants would not be contrary to public interest because the intent to keep parking off-street would be met based upon the applicant's information and information done for New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority in September 2017.
This will allow enough room according to evidence provided to keep cars on the lot. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Adequate onsite parking.
Jesus, this is like, the meeting in Messy, you have to be secretary too.
Don't worry about it being perfect.
Oh, believe me, it's not. Um, oh, when do we vote?
You need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Make a motion that spirit of ordinance is observed because the applicant intends to provide sufficient parking for all tenants.
Just a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.
Grant, make a motion that granting the variants would do substantial justice because it allows the applicant to develop their property and maintain the spirit of ordinance.
I'll second that. Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. And I'll make a motion that for the following reason, the value of the surrounding properties would not be diminished because the property owner intended to maintain sufficient parking for all tenants on the property.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion that there's no, that no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of the property. Because supply documentation indicates that the proposed number of parking spots is sufficient for the intended use of the property, and the proposed use is a reasonable one because it will provide sufficient parking for the tenants. You could paraphrase that if you want.
Basically. You guys split tenants a couple different ways here.
That's fine.
So we used to get Scotland called tenants, I'm not sure if it's over.
So when you meet the main law, we say that the additional gravel parking spaces.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we grant.
Excuse me, is there a second or a vote?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, Mara. Glad someone's keeping score. I'll make a motion that we grant variants for case number 1130 as presented with the requirement that the applicant provides for, provides additional overflow parking for at least six vehicles on the south side of the property.
Second.
I do it?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, on the final one, that has to be on the final one, too.
As to be on your notice of decision, you will have to write that, and the notice of decision paperwork is attached to the front of the red envelope to the left, right there, to the left it's attached. Right there. Are the additional parking spaces required regardless or required if needed?
Regardless.
Regardless.
Okay.
Gravel.
Gravel. Then I would just.
And specify gravel, just, you know, provide force overflow parking for at least six vehicles, I think is how I phrase it, whether it's gravel or whatever the composition is, that's.
Excuse me, Christine, I can transcribe it and get it to Christina tomorrow morning, so it'll be exactly as it was worded.
I would not change one word, obviously I couldn't, so you would want to sign it without that written, you can, or you could bring it out to you.
Well, I mean, basically.
You could write it, and then, yeah. And then I could also put the exact wording in after Mara gets it to me, so it'll have both your written and the.
The, what is it, the east end of the?
South.
South end.
If the compass roses correct on that. If the compass roses correct on Gold Bay or.
So making seventy-one spaces. Seventy-one, ten by twenty spaces. Can I use that for editorial? Seventy-one, ten by twenty spaces?
You can.
Spaces are defined, size of spaces are defined in our zoning ordinance.
So if it was less than that, they.
So we're just double codifying it.
Yeah.
I think that's, no extra.
That's all right, that's perfect.
Well, I just want to make sure I didn't ruin my extra crap in there.
That's all right, I'll take this, I guess, out of your way. Do you want me to take anything else?
No.
Okay, and then this is the next case, which is Fox.
I think I put my.
This I need. And then this goes with my, this case, unless you want it, and then the next case is Fox on the agenda.
Okay.
Are you saying the next case? No.
Yes, that one. Okay. Case number 1131, the Fox family revocable trust owner requesting, thanks, guys. Request a special exception is provided in, with Article 4, Section 403, to permit the creation of a back lot. The property is identified as map 231, Lot 21, and is located at 289 Maple Street in rural zoning district. Okay. That's what you're looking to do. Go ahead, yes. And just, and say your name for the.
Patrick Dombrowski, answered there.
Does everyone have a set of the plans?
I have set.
And there is a large one also in Ben Nelson's folder, and everyone should have an eleven by seventeen. But Ben, you do have a large-scale one in the back, right, you just picked it up. Nope, it's right there.
Okay, as far as I know, this is a special exception for Article 4, Section 403, for back lot in the rural zone. And essentially, this is the back lot. It has fifty feet of frontage and three point seven five, sorry, three and a half, three point seven five acres, because at the time when I created this, I didn't know what this area was. And ample frontage for the lot one. Lot two is the one that's requesting that we put that lot there, a special exception. And. Questions?
Yeah, so this right now is currently one lot.
Yes.
And with the, the creation of a back lot, you're then to go to the planning board for subdivision?
Yeah, we're in the process of.
They will be seen next month in front of the planning board if you approve the special exception. They have met, the surveyor, Dombrowski, has met our requirements in the section and article, which is at least fifty feet road frontage and at least exactly two acres of square footage. We stated as eight thousand seven hundred, seven thousand one twenty square feet, which is two acres.
So basically, the only thing is the fifty feet, so two hundred, right?
That's, you're allowed the fifty via the special exception. It's not a variance, so this is, they're allowed the fifty as long as you have the minimum two acres, and you have the minimum fifty, and there are no right-of-ways that would be reducing the road frontage, which there aren't. So they meet all the requirements for receiving a special exception?
With the right-of-way again, there is, eventually, this lot will most likely access that lot from the existing driveway, so we'll be like, kind of, this area here will be like a right-of-way in common, but it's not established yet. Does that make any difference with the back lot?
It states a private right-of-way cannot reduce the road frontage, or, is a, is a, so would, would it make it a private?
No, it has fifty feet of actual front.
Right.
So, since existing driveway, so is that just the driveway to the existing house now?
Uh, yes.
So you're right, a right-of-way, even if they added a right-of-way to the front lot via the fifty-foot road frontage, it would not reduce, the right-of-way does not reduce the fifty-foot of frontage.
Right.
Well, you couldn't do it when you write it in, you couldn't state that it would reduce it when you put in, when you're going to add the right-of-way through there.
Well, this is ownership for this lot too.
Right.
And there will be a, well, right-of-way in common for this lot to access.
Or there may be an easement.
Easement right-of-way is essentially the same thing, it's just like utility easements and right-of-ways, but they're generally the same language.
The underlying property would be owned by Lot Two. Is that fair, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, so the Lot Ones' access over Lot Two would be through a right-of-way or easement with Lot Two.
Correct.
I was going to say, yeah, it looks like it meets everything. Any comment from the public? I assume you guys are, okay. I need to ask it, so any comment from the public? All right, we'll close it off the board and enter into deliberation. Do I have a motion to go into deliberation?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is that yes or no?
The nice part about this is you get two places, one exit onto a highway.
Four vehicles. I'll make a motion that we approve the special exception for case number 1131 as presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
Excuse me, you're going to go through A, B, C for the special exception?
You have the worksheet, and yours, it's yes or no's, I believe, are they correct?
I will.
I have it here.
Yeah.
The answer is, really is consistent, and I can go over it.
No, no, we're fine. Just to make the motion that the answer to A, B, and C is yes, then we don't have to do three separate, that'll work.
And, yes, I'll amend my motion to state that the standards of A, B, and C have been met.
Thank you.
Ten seconds or nothing? We're good, all right.
Yep, no problem with the train.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was a record.
You did.
That was.
Excuse me, you did A, B, and C, and then you did not memorialize the, they did.
I did. I basically, I amended the motion to state that requirements of A, B, and C have been met.
Okay, so you.
Yeah.
The old man will be proud.
Did you sign with no condition?
No.
Okay, just sign it and then perfect, and then that's.
We should have added that the right-of-way for Lot One would be, should be included now, rather than later.
You'll get notice of the decision in the mail.
Okay, that's fine.
Perfect. Good night. Good night.
Fox family, 70 years from now.
Oh, you're dug it.
Is that him?
That's good, actually, that's his one. The simplest.
Well, yeah, comes an issue when they want to sell.
Keep it simple.
It would require Lot 1 to make its own entrance then.
Yeah.
Which, in my understanding, was there actually is one.
Pardon me? Yes, he is. He would be White Mountain Properties.
He was with them last time I heard.
He owns, uh, he owns the property on North Main. I believe he owns 17 rental units, multi-rental units in Newport. And he happens to own the land that Avenue Development Group is possibly presenting, that senior housing project. They have not gone to the planning board yet. Not that that matters to you, but they just haven't, just signed out. So it's all, we're, it's a tight-knit community here.
Did you guys finish?
Yep.
We all set? Okay. Case 1132, White Mountain Properties LLC owner requests a variance is provided in Article 2, Section 208.3, to permit a multi-unit structure with less than the required lot area. The property is identified as map 111, Lot 232, and is located on Sunapee, located on Sunapee Street in the general residential zoning district, R2. I saw that the first time I read it, that you'd left out Street, and then it threw me the second time I read it.
I know, I'm sorry. They don't, yeah, Sunapee, it's located on Sunapee, right. You're not in Sunapee, you're right. On Sunapee.
Like you said, I caught it the first time. I caught it the first time and missed the second. Okay, if you want to, tell us, say your name for the record and tell us what you're looking to do.
Yeah, good evening, Doug Campbell, the managing member of White Mountain Properties. And we own that lot there, 232. I can draw a picture of it. Are you familiar with the location?
I think we've got it.
You got it, oh, beautiful, perfect, okay. So the R2 allows for multifamily housing. The lot size is 17,000 square feet. And the number, the square footage per unit, as the ordinance is written, is 4,000. So it's a, it automatically allows for a four-unit to be, to be built there based upon how the ordinance reads as it is. My request is to reduce that 4,000 square foot down to 2,125 to allow me to do an eight-unit on this property. That's the request.
Okay. Do you have, I guess, it seems like a lot of units on a relatively small... You look, and I think this is the driveway where you're looking to come in, is that...
So I own that property of 118 Sunapee Street, so that has already an easement on it to allow for access to 120. And if you actually go to 120... Sorry. On the, on Sunapee Street...
Show me which one...
Like he's going to come out here.
So...
So this is...
Yeah, that's right. So there's a...
And you own...
I own this one and this one. But even if I didn't own it, there's still a right-of-way.
Yeah. This one and this one?
Yeah, no, 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 just this one.
Okay.
And 232. 232. Now, if you drive by Sunapee Street...
We have to make this so that it is explainable to those who are watching and hear. So can you give us a hand drawing?
Yeah.
Because what you just explained to the chairperson was not explained to me.
So Sunapee Street? You guys had a budget surplus, I know. All right, so Sunapee Street. Okay. This is called the circle. This is Lot 231, which is 118 Sunapee Street. I own that, so there is a right, oh, geez. There's a right-of-way here on 118 Sunapee Street to 232, which is the lot of interest and the subject of the variance request. So, yeah, so there's a, there's a right-of-way there. Now...
A recorded right-of-way.
Yes, it's in, it's in the deed for 118.
Okay.
Now, I just noticed this. I don't know if anyone has any history here, but if you drive on here, at one point, there was a driveway there. You can see that. There was a driveway there at one point. Now, whether I use that or not, that's a different thing. I just noticed it the other day. But the, the main intent is to use here.
Well, I did drive by, I thought, God, that's an awful spot for driving by.
There is, at some point, someone had access.
I hadn't noticed this little drawing on the map.
On 11 and 103, DOT has the jurisdiction on the driveway.
Okay.
Not this board.
And you would, you would get approval for at least one, and I would think only one, but they have to allow access for at least one driveway.
This makes the most sense.
From, from 11 and 103. It's DOT, not this board.
Correct, but they do have to allow them to access it from Sunapee Street?
No, they don't.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, I'm not going, I'm not going to debate it with you.
Yeah, we don't need to.
DOT can set the criteria for it if there's one there. But with an, with an alternate path, I'd be surprised if they did. Because the access to 11 and 103 becomes their jurisdiction and their decision.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's not, I mean, if the plan in front of this board is from home to circle, that's what we'll deal with. And now, too, would you be looking to build in the upper part, I'm assuming?
So the final designs and such haven't been done. My initial sketch is using the setbacks, the 30% coverage requirement. Then I can do the eight plus the 16, 16 parking spots. If I'm unable to do that, I'll either return here or I'll change my design to accommodate. But my first pass drawings show that I can, I can meet those requirements.
Okay, any questions from the board?
So what you're saying is your first pass, you can get eight units in there.
Two-story.
Two-story units. And maintain, and provide two parking spots per unit and still maintain 30% green space.
That's right, that's my, that's, that's without a survey. It's hard to get surveyors right now. I have, I'm in the queue right now for that.
Yeah.
But based upon, you know, just my, my ability to scale or drawing with the 10 by, you know, the 10-foot parking spaces.
Yeah.
The... Exactly, whatever's in the ordinance. If I'm unable to achieve that, I will either return here or I will just accept that and go at a lower unit count.
I think is your, I guess, building for, with eight units in there? How big is that on the...
Shame on me, I didn't bring the sketch.
206 by 82.
I mean, just at first blushed. I mean, it seemed like a lot of units were a fairly small lot. I mean, obviously, it's a lot of units.
So is it just one building that's two-story?
That's the idea.
And the plan is to use on the circle for your, your right-of-way?
As, as the primary, yes.
So how many rooms are you looking at per unit?
I would do a mix, predominantly one-bedrooms. I don't have the final count yet, so...
Okay, because I'm just looking at what we require for square footage for...
Right, correct, yeah, there's a...
Yeah, there's a scale here.
If any other variance is violated in the plans, you would, he would have to come back.
Right, right, but right now, you know, basically, it's actually Section 208.4 that specifies at least 4,000 square feet lot area for one.
That's right.
But that really doesn't take into account whether it's all one-story apartments or two-story apartments or such. It's kind of...
To meet the 30% requirement, you need two stories.
Right, which is a separate requirement from the 4,000 square feet per unit. It's sort of like you've got competing, or actually, you've got setback requirements, you've got the 30% green space requirement, and you've got this one that says you need 4,000 square feet per unit. And also in there, you've got to provide two parking spots per unit and access in and out. Christina, will this need to go to planning board, too?
Yes.
Okay, because they'll deal with things like snow and all that stuff.
Yeah, and, um, right, and then it'll have to be reviewed by, it's basically will be held at an apartment complex scale on a much larger, smaller scale. Yeah, the site plan.
Do we have a building footprint, a size 24 by 30?
I feel like I failed you on that. I have a sketch. 150 by 100 is the number that comes to my head. I don't know why I didn't bring it. I don't have it, I apologize. The idea is that if I'm unable to achieve the rest of this, then, then I kind of go back to reducing it or coming back to you in the future. This allows me to clear the land, get a survey, come up with a design. I mean, doing this, you know, back of the envelope. I think I can do it. If I can't, with the surveyor giving me the dimensions and the elevations, then I won't.
150, is it, you have the whole lots 82 feet wide, right, or 82 and a half?
Yeah, I mean, it could be.
I mean, we've approved decks and, you know, winged tubes and such a thing with back of the envelope. I don't know, I'm a little reticent with back of the envelope for eight units. I don't know if anybody else has the same reservations I do. And I know it's a chicken and egg thing. You don't want to spend a ton of money on it.
I could, I could tell you this, if I may.
Yeah, sure.
So I have 53 apartments in town. I have had nine turnovers this year. I've had 450 inquiries on those...
Yeah, I know we need to, I know we need the units. But like I said, this is, this is a, this isn't a deck or a carport or something. Like I said, that we've done back of the envelope, that we're real comfortable doing back of the envelope with. But I don't know.
I could tell you that I've done a drawing to scale, if you don't have it with me, where I could meet this based on Doug Campbell's sketch and my ability to scale. Now I need, now I need to go to the next level with the professionals.
Yeah, right. Did I hear a question?
I, I got to agree that he's, it's insufficient information for us to make a decision. We need to look at the variance in, in the five steps. And we can't do that. So I say that we continue it to a point at which we can get more information. The 15-foot right-of-way should also be presented. I've got to go back to DOT. With Christine, there is a grandfather status. But on 11 and 103, they can override that. And they did, wait a minute, they did it on 11 and 103 from the Kellyville Bridge in that project. They took two feet and did away with what's called the fee simple ownership of, under the property that gives you that right.
I just was stating that every property that has a Sunapee Street address, DOT has to allow some access via Sunapee Street. They get to decide where, how, why, but they can't just say you're not allowed access to your own private property. They have to allow some. Now, of course, I could confirm that definitely, but they, I don't believe they have a right to cut off any access. Say, pretend there was no right of, there was no access on the back. They have no right to not allow you onto your own property.
Okay.
That's what, all I was saying, that you can't eliminate someone from getting on their, on and off their own property.
All right. We need, we need the needed right-of-way, right-of-way information also. The reason for that being, it is possible without, at this point, without our knowledge of the actual subdivision of this lot required that rather than to come out on Sunapee Street, which is John Stark Highway. So the deed work for the right-of-way and this lot would be relevant to your request.
So I'll say this. I own that property. And whatever the deed needs to be, I'll make it that way if it's not the case.
Okay, but it states here in front of us, the 15 is already there.
That's right.
So that means it's recorded somewhere.
That's right.
Okay, and that recordation, the date of that recordation would be important because did that come with the subdivision that created this lot in the first place in order to alleviate the hazard entrance onto Sunapee Street? In other words, was it a thoughtful thing done at that time for this lot creation?
I'll ask another question. How would you ever develop that lot without this right-of-way being?
How did someone develop it in the first place? Did, if you and I were here today and we had to do this, we've got this piece up here which goes, which includes both of the lots that you own now.
What could be 10, 15?
And we say, as we make this second lot, this back front, where will its entrance be? And so we say here is better than here. So I would have, it would be to your benefit to produce that information in your behalf.
Okay, so more on the back than front.
That that right-of-way probably, in my mind, as a guess, was created in order to accommodate this other lot. And if that was done by a board, then it is poured in concrete. There's your entrance.
But, I mean, Christina's right, they probably can't deny access, but they can, access to go in and take wood off is different than access to build a house.
So I believe it's an open, you have a proper, private property rights that you're allowed to put something other than just removing wood from it.
No, I've got landlocked, there's landlocked land that you can put a forestry cat on.
They're, they're not landlocked. They have...
We're digressing way off.
Right, I could, I could, again, I can confirm that, but I'm pretty positive that they have to give some access to this lot.
Yeah, we're, we're digressing. But...
Ben, can I? Can I jump in on that? CAR, controlled access right-of-way. When they did the Kellyville Bridge, they bought a two-foot strip all the way along past my property. I fought it tooth and nail. Because here's what happens. You've got a road, if I draw on your picture, here's the road. If I'm a butter, I own to the center line of that road. You do on your property. So therefore, they wanted to control the entrances. So what they said was, we're going to buy a two-foot strip right here. That... So what they said was, we're going to buy a two-foot strip right here. That takes away your property rights for the entire road to the center line. And I had to accept the checks. I fought it tooth and nail. But what they were doing was, was a ruse because they were buying two feet to gain thirty, not buying the thirty.
But they didn't prevent access, correct, to your private properties?
Say that again.
They didn't prevent access onto your private property.
They do now. I cannot put another driveway on it, I can't widen it, I can't change it.
Right, you have access, the one, yes.
I found my drawing.
So, so it's not the deed.
One twenty by fifty was the dimensions, not one.
I was gonna say, one hundred, one fifty.
One twenty by what?
Marked out numbers, but that's there.
One twenty by what?
Uh, fifty.
We know which way it's going to be oriented.
Yeah, I was, um, that's, you know, through the ruler to scale.
How do I get it back?
I have a picture of the girlfriend.
Okay, another issue though, I mean, your lot coverage, all buildings including accessory buildings, you'll cover a lot more than thirty percent of the area of the lot. So you're covering more than thirty percent, aren't you?
Tell me, I, uh, made an error.
Madam President.
Yeah, um, yeah, I mean, it's, you'd need thirty percent of seventeen thousand, what's that, that's, uh? Yeah, oh, it's, uh, it's pretty darn close.
Thirty percent of, uh, seventeen thousand is about, duh, five thousand.
So it's three thousand, fifty-one hundred, right? And I'm currently, I mean, I'm currently, I mean, this is Doug's drawing.
Yeah.
Fifty times one twenty, that's, uh, five thousand, six thousand. So, so the answer to that is, I'm not asking to, to break this yet because I don't have a final design.
Yeah. Well, you're right, you're.
So it's, you know, what I could do is change the mix of the, of the buildings, if we want bedrooms, reduce the size.
So what are we doing tonight? Do we need more information and what do you need or?
I think we need more information. Uh, we need, uh, deeds for, uh, two thirty-one and, uh, two thirty-two. We need, uh, building footprint, um, parking, et cetera, so that we can make sure that we are within the thirty percent requirements and meet all setbacks.
You don't really have to worry about all that because if he was to ever present it to the planning board in violation of, it couldn't even move forward to the planning board if he was in violation of setbacks or parking.
You're asking us to approve something we don't have knowledge of?
Only approve this one request for the coverage. If he comes to me with anything that breaks anything else, he has to immediately come back to you because you're only approving the one item, nothing else. And that, so any plans that violate any other zoning code, he cannot move forward. He ha, he's got to change it or he has to come and ask for another variance. Just, just a point.
Christina, aren't we dealing with what we can do tonight with what information we do not have?
You're only, he was only asking for the one item. Again, you still might not be able to cho, uh, decide tonight. But parking you wouldn't have to worry about because unless he has the sixteen spaces, he has to come back to you for a variance or shrink the size. That was all I was stating, and it would still go to planning. But you would only be giving him a variance for this one item, not that you can do that even that one. I'm not stating you, you have, you believe you have enough information for that one variance, but.
How long would it take for you to get a plan to us? Now you have a surveyor problem?
I don't understand why that's required as part of the zoning decision. I understand the constraints of building, I understand all these dimensions. The final design will be within that or won't proceed. What I'm asking for is the ability to increase the, the number of units. If I can't achieve what's in the ordinance that I don't have, you know, I, I can't go forward, right? So I guess I don't understand why you're asking for that. I, I don't have a final design. The surveyors are at least three months out, at least. I mean, I, I can't even get started.
And they're extended too, and, I mean, I'm not looking for, this is just me talking, I'm not looking for a survey, I'm looking for a drawing on paper that, you know.
That, that's fair, there's, uh, you know, there's some unique elevation, um, issues I'm going to have to deal with in order to make this. You know, I'm going to have to move some soil and all that, so.
So right now, you could put a four-bedroom on there without.
I don't need to come here for the four unit. It's not, I don't have to come for any variance, it's, it's within the ordinance.
It's just the fact that our zoning ordinance wants to see four thousand square feet of lot space per dwelling unit. And once you get.
This changes the thirty percent rules I was talking about.
No, it's separate, it's separate. This is, this is one.
It's only the one variance.
So you need four thousand square foot per lot.
Yeah, and he's just asking for.
Per unit.
And he's just asking for.
Lot area requirement per multifamily dwelling shall be in accordance with the lot area stipulations in two oh, two oh eight dot three. Provided that at least four thousand square feet lot area per dwelling unit shall be available for either new construction of multifamily dwellings or conversion of existing structures into multifamily dwellings. Basically, our zoning says, you know, for eight dwelling units, you know, we need, the lot should be thirty-two thousand square feet and it's only seventeen.
So it's about half.
Like you said, it would make a difference two-story, one-story. I mean, this is what I'm looking for would be a, a drawing, you know, not an engineer's eye, but just a drawing of the building, where the, how it's going to be situated on the park, lot, where the parking is going to be and, and the exit, you know, where the access comes in, visits. If you put the fifty by one twenty here, that only leaves like fifteen feet to come in and turn, you know, I just, I, I would, and we can continue it to the next meeting without having to read all this and all that stuff too. So, I mean, that's, that's, that's me. I don't know what everybody else.
I still feel like a lot of those are planning and it's not zoning because he's asking permission to put eight units on, something that he can put four on. You know, how that looks and everything is plan, it's all planning. Uh, the right-of-way part, for me, is important because I feel like we already have enough, like, Sunapee Street and that area right there, it's not good for getting on to.
Understood.
And so if you were going to put a driveway to go to the Columbus Circle, I feel like that's a lot safer bet. But the shape of your building and all that, it's not zoning, that's planning.
Well, add.
I mean, provide, he still has to meet all the requirements. If not, he has to come here.
Anything else for zoning, and then of course, planning, not that you couldn't take it, but has to meet all building and safety required. Like, the fire chief would have to reveal if he believed the fire, for, for Turner, that safety and parking and, uh, but, but again, it doesn't mean that you can't ask for that, it's just that it couldn't, even if you approved less and he, and then it can't get by a safety issue, he can't do it. I mean, if you improve less square fo, the, less square footage, the more units, the less square footage per unit allowed. If he, if he stumbled in a safety area via like the fire chief, that would kill the eight units there. I don't even know, I'm trying to think outside the box, I don't even know what Steve would say. He might say the building has to be shorter. Like, or you have to go up three store, for it to be then safe. I don't, but that would, that would potentially kill a plan. But, do you know what I mean? If it became unsafe, like for turning around and stuff.
Do we know why that rule is made?
You mean the four thousand square foot, and the clue?
I would guess it has, well, no, the thirty percent is green space probably.
Thirty percent, thirty percent, your, your building.
Would be the green space.
Yeah, but that's not being, that's being.
Your building takes no more than thirty percent.
That's what I mean, that's, that's probably for green space, so I don't think that two thousand, four thousand is green space.
And it could be because it's in a residential area that they want some, uh, you know, green space surroundings unit.
It's the R two zone that typically does have lots smaller than a lot of other zones.
And the R C?
The, it's in the R two.
R two.
R, R two zone, which is one of the, the zones that, that has smaller lots overwhelmingly.
And just to guess, there was probably, apartments probably weren't as, um, as advantageous in nineteen seventy as they are now. So it might have been the limit, the number of units, but now we're way short of units.
And it's not like it's an area that would, you know, not fit, it would fit the neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's not the Columbus Circles, and this gets into, you know, we got the safety thing. Columbus Circle is the best access on the, although it does get out onto, um.
Yeah, but it's better than Pinnacle.
And it does come out onto, um, you know, summer, right, too, right?
Summer, yes.
Which is, you can go off Sunapee Street in the summer and in the winter time you want to go.
Yeah, right. I just feel like he's going to hit a bunch of obstacles that he's not going to be able to overcome, and I don't think eight's going to work anyways. But at least if the eight was approved and he could only do five, because that's just what this will actually look like. He doesn't have to come back here and, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, but how do we, how do we approve on the information that we have now? We do not have any documents that, that will be in the file. We've got to have a plan. Ben's hand-drawn plan with dimensions and backup documents is sufficient, but nothing is insufficient.
I think the thing is, we need to, we don't understand the hardship that.
The hardship's tough on them.
Well, the hardship, I mean, you want to put up eight units and that is your hardship, but the zoning calls out four thousand square feet for a reason, so they may not have wanted as much density normally.
So, uh, may I come up?
Sure.
I would say it's highly unlikely as a business case to proceed. Probably, price can be between six and eight. There's, there's no economic incentive to build it for you.
And we can.
Use your hardship.
We can use economics for hardship.
Yeah, and that, that we can. Yeah, and, and we hear that with other developments, there's, you know, an economy of scale where, which, where things become affordable, like the one that was in here earlier. There's probably an economy of scale where a certain number of units makes it, you know, doable. And certainly, you know, with the cost of construction, you know, you need to be able to make the numbers work.
I can tell you renting one unit's a loser. But, yeah, I, I hear.
Can you?
Go ahead.
No, you, you start it, go.
Well, I was gonna say, I hear what Tim's saying, that we're more in concept than, than hard design and, and but I still think we need to see, and I don't know if, uh, we're right down to, um, if, if we need to see the deed, but if we just know that the deed's recorded, you know, that there is a needed right-of-way. And, you know, a drawing, a drawing of where the building's going and where the parking lot's going, that would go a long way for me, other than just the concept.
That could all change though, it would be completely.
It could if there were safety concerns and that would, it could be designed differently. Or bill, or a building code, which is pretty much out of my purview, would be the building inspector and, uh, and, um.
Before we can get to the eight, we have to get to the law. And, and that would be in the documents that we get. Can a hardship be created by a property owner through what he thinks he has to do to survive? Is that a hardship? Because if that's the case, um, go out and buy any lot that's substandard and say you want to put it in, you got to grant, grant the variance to it. So we need to see some sort of a plan, and so my motion would be that we continue this to.
Uh, that would be.
Next meeting, for a hand-drawn and a, and a few documents.
If you wanted to make that motion.
Thirty days from now?
Be the twenty-first, July, twenty-first.
Hold on, yeah. I, just to get it, you're, you're absolutely, July twenty-first, Thursday, July twenty-first at six thirty P M. If you'd like to add that to your motion, it would be beneficial, Bert.
Could you put me first because I'm going to Washington D.C. the next day?
You, you would be, um.
Continue business as ours first.
Yeah, thank you.
No, it's actually not, but we could request a move to first. It's actually kind of silly, but I can't change your agenda, it's in your rules of procedure.
Yeah, I think continuing would be.
Yeah, we can agree that, I'll do any other stuff.
All right.
So, before we let him go, you want the deed, the, the deed for.
Oh, yeah.
Two thirty-one?
Yes, and two.
All right.
Can I get you those deeds in advance so that, uh, you have a chance to look at it?
I, I will send the, I could send it as quickly as you get it to me, to them. I usually send a week in advance, uh, and, and, yeah.
Oh, here's an asset. So that way you show up with what everybody wants, so that you just, you know, you're dreaming.
But if you want to have an opportunity to read the deeds in advance.
I should have the sketch too, at least a week in advance to send them to him. And potentially, if you do want to talk to DOT at all, to maybe even see what the situation is.
I might, you know, yeah, if he's got the right-of-way on the Columbus Circle, that's.
I just thought that might relieve you even more, I don't know.
Louise, go ahead.
Mr. Spalding, did you want to list the, um, requests?
Well, my, my motion, my mo, my motion got ran over, hasn't got a second, so it's just talk at this point. We'll, we'll go further with it here.
Make your motion with the, um, the date, time.
Well, I, I want to go back and, and, uh, see if we can make something that is sensible. I'm thinking that right-of-way was created in order to make this law in the first place. And if that's the case, then from a public saf, safety point of view, we have to figure that in. Because the downhill two eleven and one oh three on a private driveway on some mornings is going to be a slide to the bottom. And that's with tenants who have gone out there and got to go to work, so this public safety issue of the right-of-way is significant. And it appears that it's already there and did it, so we need a deed for lot two thirty-one and lot two thirty-two, so that we can put that piece together and say, okay, it's going to be safe. Then we need to go to the setbacks and et cetera. Ah, we meet the setbacks, then maybe it's a go. But eight and square footage, um, we have, we have a landlord here who, uh, can, has experience and has done a lot, has, he mentioned the numbers of them. He has got, uh, one with six apartments, at four thousand would be twenty-four thousand, it only has sixteen thousand. He has another with three apartments, which would be twelve thousand, it's ten thousand.
Which ones are there in that?
Well, that's eight to ten Laurel Street, the one I just mentioned. Uh, the previous one was, uh, Central Street by the. The previous one was Central Street by the town office, right here. Then he's got 12 apartments with two acres. He meets everything and has plenty of them. Then the...
So for what you're saying, the...
What I'm saying, Jeff, let me say what I'm saying.
Okay.
All right? Is he has experience, he has a number of apartments. I think that he's doing things well, meaning even he will want the entrance to be the right-of-way rather than 11 and 103. So all we need to do is see his plan in order to help to guide him to do what he wants to do, if, in fact, we can get by the zoning requirements.
Right. But what I'm getting at is, the variance he wants is to reduce the amount square foot of lot, the number of units a year. What you've mentioned, there's already similar situations in this immediate area that have that same condition. So we're not creating a new variance situation, because it exists in other properties right around here.
So I would add that for next month.
So I mean...
There's grandfathers, Kevin.
Yes, I know, but I would...
No, I'm just making it simple.
That almost is enough to consider moving forward, because the existing...
The neighborhood is already adjusted to that.
Right. It's...
So...
We're not creating a new density in the area.
Right.
You basically said, this area is already that dense.
All right. We're discussing stuff that we can discuss next month.
So do we really need to look at the right-of-way and stuff and the layout on the property? Because that all... There is no request for a variance from any of those requirements. Those all have to be met, or they'll have to come back for another variance. Just looking at the density of units on the, you know, acreage.
I don't wanna...
It's already an existing...
I wanna have a standard of having a little more drawing than this, so we don't get more things like the campground or whatever it was out there on Pike Hill. I mean, I'd look at... Limit that type of stuff.
But looking at just the density, I mean, Bert basically said, we already have that condensed density in the area.
And that would bode well for argument next month and go a long way. And my sense is, in 1970, they wanted less apartments, so that's why they did the 4,000. And now, I think, it's pretty big consensus, we need more apartments. Because it used to be, "Damn apartments, they bring kids in." Well, the school could use a few more kids, and they don't seem to either, so...
Well, the teachers need someplace to live now.
Yes.
That too, yeah.
And so my guess is that's why the 4,000 square feet was there was the limit in 1970, when you did one more four-bedroom houses or two-bedroom houses.
And Christina, if you're keeping a running list of things, planning boards, you look at revising the zoning ordinance, you could throw that...
You could. Or you just leave it and you do it case by case like you are here, but I agree, there are some things that things have so dramatically changed, which I hope they don't stay this suffering way, but the shocking need... I know another unit, one unit's getting redone, and the guy has seven people lined up. I get... It is sad. I hope it changes, period, somehow.
Not quick enough.
All right. More is there? Hand up.
I need a second.
Oh, yeah.
Bert's motion to continue to January 21st, 2022.
Yeah, he hasn't made it.
Oh, July? I'm sorry?
Not January.
Okay, but I... Okay. I'm gonna ditch that one, I'm gonna make a new one. Okay? Because that one did not include all of what I think we need at this point. So I would move that we continue to July 21st, 2022, case number... And requiring a deed for Lot 231 and 232. Just a single copy, and she can copy the rest for us. Then we have lot dimensions by the deed, which will do our check and balance against what we're looking at here, which is not meant to... Talk about disclaimers. The lot dimensions that are on there are not concrete, so we'll have both. I think that does it. Anybody else think of anything that we need?
I think Ben wants a sketch.
Yeah, a drawing. You know, a drawing of a building and...
All right, yep. Building location.
And parking lot. But like you say, it doesn't have to be a surveyor's drawing to rough scale, I guess.
Yeah. Sure, setbacks, sort of thing, you know, make sure we don't take out more than 30% of the lot. Does a fire truck need 360? Or just...
I don't know about that. That would...
I'll ask, I'll ask.
You could call Steve to...
I think the side lots are only eight feet, so it's hard to figure out. That's what I thought. I'll stop while I talk to him, though. But it's... Lots small enough that the roof of the hood is in. It's not like it's the...
More, it's a...
That official. Can you bend into the...
More of that one dies for lack of a second.
Wait, wait. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And...
Oh.
Go ahead.
You added that to continue date and time. I didn't hear the... You did, okay.
Do a date certain, yeah.
Thank you, sorry, I missed it. I just wanna make sure.
More will swear to that.
Good, 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 good. I missed it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, here. Okay. Any other business?
Well...
What's this?
I have the grandfather rights to go over, although it's relatively boring and benign, and I would more than willing continue it. And I'm not sure which I should do, is I had gotten some information. Some of it's kinda lengthy, but I could try to send it in... One of them's thick. Send it to you so you could look it over. I know Ben especially wanted to have some on the history of crime, unless you wanna chew into it now. But I feel like I don't know if I've sent you the documents I found.
Todd plus L. Casey used to say, "Nothing good happened after nine o'clock," and we're getting...
I know, we're getting to that.
I think he used to say after eight o'clock.
Let me do this. Let me give you some of these, or I can make... I have only... Ben, I know you specifically were interested, and again, this might not even satisfy you fully. And there's... Do you... Those were the ones I had found, and I know Bert did research on this also. And I would have to send you, or you would have a copy.
You mean, so you mean your...
Okay, there.